I don't think it's.
Okay.
So I'll call this January thirteenth meeting of the Riley County Commission to order. Please everybody join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, go ahead and jump right into swearing, you know, of local public officials.
Good Judge Larchick, can we do you first, sir?
All right.
That's what I'll have you face camera because I'm sure the camera likes to see you.
All right. Wife may be watching, I don't know.
There you go. If I can have you raise your right hand, sir. You Jeremy Larchick solemnly swear to support the Constitution of the United States, Constitution of the State of Kansas, and faithfully discharge the duties of twenty-first Judicial District Court Judge Number Two. So help you God.
So we got.
Look, I just need you to sign this, sir.
Oh, all right.
You got them?
Okay.
Good.
All right, judges always have opinions.
You can just leave it sit there on the desk.
All right.
Kendra, can we do that? Thank you. I can bring her a hand. You Kendra Lewis and solemnly swear to support the Constitution of the United States, Constitution of the State of Kansas, and faithfully discharge the duties of twenty-first Judicial District Court Judge Division Two. So help you God.
Oh, please, so help me God.
Congratulations.
Well, I went back there.
That's okay.
Mr. McKinley, can we do you next? Right hand, sir. You Greg McKinley solemnly swear that you support the Constitution of the United States, Constitution of the State of Kansas, and faithfully discharge the duties of Riley County Commission District Number Two. So help you God. Hey, sir. I can hear you have a fan or. You're dumping on top of each other.
Help.
Odd person out this time.
I was gonna pop some popcorn.
You should have been in charge of refreshments. Can you raise your right hand? You Catherine Fokie solemnly swear that you support the Constitution of the United States, Constitution of the State of Kansas, and faithfully discharge the duties of Riley County Commission District Number Three. So help you God.
I will help you guys.
Congratulations. Let's see. Tyler Hager, do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States, Constitution of the State of Kansas, and faithfully discharge the duties of Riley County Register? So help you God.
I do. So help me God.
Congratulations again, ma'am.
Thank you.
Amy, that looks on Amy. I've got your right hand. Amy Mangus, do you solemnly swear that you support the Constitution of the United States, Constitution of the State of Kansas, and faithfully discharge the duties of Riley County Register? Indeed. So help you God.
I do. So help me God.
Barry. Big one for you. Raise your right hand, sir. Do you very well solemnly swear that you support the Constitution of the United States, Constitution of the State of Kansas, and faithfully discharge the duties of Riley County Attorney? So help you God.
I do. So help me God.
Congratulations, sir.
Mr. Bannister.
Yeah, switch positions, that's for sure.
You Rich Fargo, you solemnly swear or affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Kansas, and faithfully discharge the duties of Riley County Clerk.
Congratulations associated. Next, we have the reorganization of the board.
We have to do each one of those separately.
Don't have to. You can do it. Yeah, Catherine had asked me that earlier.
Okay, yeah, I couldn't remember. It's been two years.
It's typically done all together.
Okay.
Chair, vice chair, member.
I will go ahead and make a motion then that reorganize with Commissioner Greg McKinley as. President of the Board and Commissioner Catherine Fokie as Vice Chairman of the Board. And I guess that leaves me as just the member, so.
Well, second.
Thanks. It moved and seconded to from the reorganization with Commissioner McKinley as Chair and. Commissioner Fokie as Vice Chair. It's all in favor.
Aye.
The meeting is now yours.
Yeah, thank you. Commissioner Devan.
Let's first up. I'm mad at his public comments. Betty.
We're commissioners. My name is Jeremy Harmon. I'm the Director of Community Relations from the Center of Public Ministry of Human Rights. So I'm honored and sure about to make proclamation following these comments in honor of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. today. The legacy of Dr. King and competence and influential decisions, monumental actions, and steadfast progressions of humanitarian rights that reach far beyond civil rights. Your proclamation encourages people to reflect on the principles of social change, equality, community, and humanitarian service. In answer with whereas, each of us can and must contribute to making our communities better. If increased opportunity allows our citizens. There's a population of our citizens that are often forgotten, neglected, or not considered when it comes to their safety or well-being. This was evident in the lead up to and on Saturday, January fourth. I am not here to criticize the valued efforts and work done by county employees. They deserve an abundance of praise. I am here to bring awareness to an area where we can and must improve in order to save lives. On January second, there was much discussion about the incoming storm and emergency management made a post about preparedness, which was shared by the county government page. On January third, Riley County Government Page posted about road crews being prepared and ready. Early during the day of January fourth, weather conditions began to deteriorate into what would become the historic winter storm. To all good. By one P M, emergency management posted an update about worsening road conditions and R C P D going into the emergency action reporting phase. At one ten P M, we received a call from an E A one employee who informed us that Manhattan Public Library is closing at two P M. And was concerned about a plan for the homeless during the storm. Between one ten and one thirty, we attempted to contact other agencies, organizations, and locations that provide daytime shelter, only to find they had either already closed or were closing early. This included city and county buildings that typically provide relief. Recognizing that the need for emergency shelter was not addressed, we jumped into action to open as soon as we could. This presented a challenge, though. As we're an all-volunteer organization that relies on scheduled volunteers, we use borrowed space and operate overnight to fill the void after other services have closed. Daytime or last minute emergency operations are not something we're prepared for. However, after some coordination, we were able to open the shelter at three P M. While we were able to accomplish that, it created an hour-long gap where many of the ones we served were not aware that we were open or even able to, and a few spent the night cleaning for themselves. We were grateful the First Congregational Church for the use of their space outside of our agreed times and allowing us to remain open around the clock, forty-one hours until the morning of January sixth, when we'd be able to community open. In the nights since January fourth, we have averaged seventeen guests with five nights matching or exceeding our most ever on one night of eighteen. Last night, we had twenty-two with one being a child. Commissioners, I thank you for your time and attention. I'll be happy to discuss any of this further if you'd like. Can I have some cards that I'll pass if he does with me? Thank you so much.
That came out and I was, I thought we had talked, had that set up already in past years. I was kind of surprised we didn't have. For me, shelters.
You know, part of it is if it's a prolonged event, or if I know there's going to be a. A mass type of situation, as I think is what's been discussed, so. But, um. Yeah.
Yeah, I think that we can do a lot better than we now.
Go ahead.
Good morning. My name is November Hama Simmons Wood, and I'm the pastor at First Congregational United Church of Christ where the warming shelter is located. And thank you for the opportunity to share a comment this morning. I'm here today to urge the commissioners to take a more active role in caring for those who lack adequate shelter during inclement weather. This includes not only those who are unhoused, but it also includes those who lack adequate heat in their homes that they live in. As my colleague mentioned, Senator Hope was the only option for about twenty people during the blizzard. I believe that organizing and coordinating safe shelter for citizens during an extreme weather event is a responsibility of our local government. We should not be relying solely on volunteer-led organizations to do this life-saving work, especially when there's been no coordination or planning or communication with the volunteers who are running the shelter. I recognize that there are some perceived barriers to the county government taking a role. There may be concerns about liability. Fortunately, those liability risks are very minimal because most guests at the shelter aren't likely to be litigious. Additionally, liability doesn't go away simply because no shelter is available. If Senator Hope hadn't scrambled to stay open those forty-one hours, more than a dozen people would have been out in the historic snowstorm with nowhere to turn for shelter. There almost certainly would have been deaths in our community on Sunday, January the fifth. The county is responsible for emergency preparation and management. If those deaths had occurred, the county may have been held viable because no shelter was available. I know that operating an emergency shelter is challenging. Right now, we are asking volunteers to meet those challenges. In a crisis situation, our county relied on everyday uncompensated citizens with no specialized training to put their own lives at risk to get to the shelter and save other people's lives. We literally had citizens over the weekend hiking through the snow on foot to volunteer, cook meals, and look in park bathrooms for the guests that we haven't been able to locate yet. This is beyond what volunteers should ever be asked to do. Emergency management on this level should be staffed by trained, compensated, insured first responders. County website says that Riley County Emergency Management is the designated disaster agency for the county with the responsibility for coordinating the mitigation of preparedness for response to and recovery from disasters. And so I welcome continued conversation about how we can partner to ensure that everyone in our county is protected during future inclement weather events. Thank you very much for your time.
Local public comments. That will go to Commissioner comments.
Don't have too much to report since our last meeting, as all my scheduled meetings were canceled due to the snowstorm. Did a lot of shoveling, making walking trails in the snow for people and the dog. Then basically kind of holed up in the house and answered emails and phone calls. I did watch the funeral on Thursday for President Jimmy Carter at the National Cathedral. It was a beautiful service. Spent some time over the weekend going over today's meeting agenda and documents, looked over future agendas. It'll take some time to catch up for us for the next couple of weeks. As far as emergency preparedness, I really think we didn't look very good as a county. I sent a message out about we weren't having shelters and the commenter got, well, we didn't get very many people the last time. But I feel that, you know, what is a life worth? You know, somebody would have died. How much is that worth? And I really make this public comment that I think we need to do better in the future. Plan.
I'd go with the planning part of that for sure. I don't know. I mean, we had one opened in February twenty-one, and we had that prolonged winter cold and storm event, and I. I don't remember who was staffing. I think it was R C P D. It was that pot trough.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. And I don't remember what the numbers were. I don't know. I don't know if that's the most important part of that, but I think it's just the planning part of that. We're not what resources we do have, whether they're private or public, and trying to figure out where they can be best planted. And yeah, I would say that dialogue certainly needs to continue with some depth and some vision.
You're sure.
Me, on the other hand, I did have quite a bit going on still here. Maybe that's why I feel like I'm still kind of caught up for the moment, but it's been quite a week with the winter storm. And of course, it was not meeting on Thursday because of the national proclamation, but I did have some dialogue on Friday, January third, with April Schwartz from Vining Associates in regards to the audit being performed on the twenty-twenty-three Puny Mental Health overall agency budget and the work going into it to get that completed and finalized. Had a really good conversation on that, and hopefully February, March is somewhere in that range. It'll be done and complete, so. Also, on that Friday, I met with a former director of the Government Military Council, John Ambrose, to discuss the military-related items involving Fort Riley and local veterans issues, as well as their spouses who are still living and working in the area. Just trying to get some ideas and some thoughts on that. Of course, got through the first major snowstorm over the weekend, or last weekend, I guess I should say, fifteen inches of snow, but fourteen point eight is what I heard. I measured snow on top of a pallet that worked across the way there from the airport, and it was sixteen and a quarter. So I don't know. That's just right across the fence there, so. Or they would have reported that, but I don't know. But anyway, it was a lot. Still is a lot. Sounds like there's more coming too, unfortunately, so. See how that works out. Last Monday, I attended a C C B H C Strategic Planning Session with Puny Mental Health. It was supposed to be in person, but it got moved to Zoom due to the inclement weather, as you can probably guess. It's a great opportunity to see and understand the direction the agency is heading and the progress they're making in order to accomplish it. It's quite complicated at the moment. It really is, but they're working steadily. It's making those changes and hopefully we can work with them to accomplish that. Wednesday afternoon, I had my monthly Teams call with Naco's Community Economic and Workforce Development Committee. After some opening remarks from our Chair Angela Connolly, she's a Commissioner in Hennepin County, Minnesota. We heard from Sean Trice Barnes. She's a Program Manager with the Economic Mobility Staff at Naco. She discussed and went into details in the upcoming V R E C C forum. Next speaker was Patrick Spence, who's also Program Manager with the Economic Mobility Team at Naco. He discussed the county's for housing solutions update. You call it an update, but boy, it seemed like more of a comprehensive overhaul of that. My guess is it'll probably change again with the new administration, so. Last guest speaker was Josh Branderman. He's the Policy Director for Naco and with our Economic and Workforce Development Committee. He discussed the recently released HUD home final rule. I'm probably going to go on a limb and say that one's probably going to change with the new administration too, but it won't happen quickly. Got our usual legislative update from Capitol Hill with Mike Matthews, who's our Legislative Director for the Committee, and we closed the meeting. Thursday afternoon, I had my monthly Teams call with Naco's Veterans and Military Services Committee, albeit it was a very short meeting, after some opening remarks and welcomes from our Chair Sid Conklin. He's a Commissioner in Randolph County, Missouri, so just right across the way, discussed some upcoming legislative items and things that are being worked early in the Washington, D.C., the one hundred nineteenth Congress, some key pieces of military and veterans legislation, and how we as a committee, then work with our federal delegation to ensure that they get passed. And then we got our usual update from Capitol Hill. It was kind of a kind of a repeat from the day before, basically, so. Friday morning, I had my last pre-law board meeting at R C P D to go through the January twenty-first meeting agenda. Keep in mind, this month's meeting will be held on Tuesday, the twenty-first, and not Monday, the twentieth, in celebration of the Martin Luther King Junior Holiday. It will be busy with some agendas, including changing of the law board, several other recognitions and promotions, and just going through the basic twenty-twenty-five board meeting timelines. And then also on Friday, I met with one of the groups that have that infill R H I D application to discuss the project and just have any questions that needed to be answered or clarified. There's going to be more dialogue on that moving forward, and just spent the rest of the weekend pretty much stayed at home. There wasn't any reason to really be out. Watched a lot of college football and NFL football and just preparing to get back on track after a long delay.
Go ahead. And then I say the snow, it's hard to measure the snow. We get so much. I had three inches in places and two feet other places. The back door was drifted up against the back door. I had to push it. Okay, there was a snow this deep against the back door. Took a while to get eaten out the door. The other thing, finished up the last of the five birthdays in the week after Christmas, week and a half after Christmas. Last Tuesday, I attended a Leonardville City Meeting. They had a long discussion about giving a permit for a crate home, which is made from shipping containers. And they had a little lot of discussion back and forth, but they did finally evoke to approve it. And then their big, then the other discussion was where to get rid of all the snow piles. Then Wednesday, in Randolph City, and there was some discussion on the scamming they received, and R C P D says there's little chance to recover, kind of went into how that all happened. What scammers have. They're. They have days to do things. Then they also had a discussion about moving more snow out of this. They had one path through, and they're talking about getting somebody out to widen the path through town. And that's all I had.
Ready for business, Commissioners? First item I have is Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Community Celebration and Day of Service Proclamation.
Go ahead and make a motion to approve the proclamation for Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Community Celebration and Day of Service Proclamation.
I would second that.
Been moved and seconded to approve proclamation for Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day of Service. All in favor?
Aye.
All three, please sign.
Thank you. Next, Commissioners, I have Riley County Employee Force for Ward Morgan Volunteer Firefighter, Riley County Fire District Number One, Separation from Service, Kirk Manning, for an exempt status change, Senior Analyst in Public Works Department. All three, please sign. Commissioners, any items for the city-county meeting? It's at city office at this time.
I can't think of anything being R H I D and had that discussion.
Any items for intergovernmental luncheon? All like to attend?
Yeah.
Ryan?
When?
On seven.
Yeah. Jacob's not here. Will Jacob attend?
Yes.
That's a record case. Okay.
Okay. Commissioners need a motion on the accounts payable and payroll for last week, actually.
I would make a motion to approve the accounts payable and payroll from last week.
It says when completed. I hope it's completed.
I saw that as well. I saw that as well. It is. I have it right here.
I'll go ahead and say.
Been moved and seconded to approve payroll and accounts payable. All in favor?
Aye.
Any changes to the minutes, Commissioners?
Make a motion to approve the minutes as written from the January second meeting of the Riley County Commission.
I would second that.
Been moved and seconded to approve the minutes with January second meeting. All in favor?
Attending the agendas, look, Commissioners?
It's simply not too bad.
Any items for next week's press conference? Local Government Day is coming up Wednesday, January twenty-second, from one P M to seven P M. Would all the Commissioners like to go? Get registered for that?
I already registered, so yeah.
Okay, you want registered, Greg? Catherine, you want to go?
I don't know. Maybe. I got like on my schedule. A little bit more.
Yeah, just let us know and send you to get you registered.
I'll look at the agenda. Is there an agenda out yet?
No, we we meet over at the K A C office and kind of discuss some things. And then we go over to the Beacon, which is just on the northwest corner of the Capitol grounds over there. It's a dual thing with a league of municipality. When they do a panel discussion, they'll pull some legislators and they'll kind of ask some questions and so on and so forth, so to get to meet some county and city officials from around the state.
Pretty much same format every year, just different speakers or legislators that have signed up for it. Twenty-second, one P M to seven P M.
Then we have the chamber retreat that same week, right, on the twenty-fourth?
I believe so.
Yeah, that's a lot of retreats.
A lot of meetings.
Yeah.
There tend to be a lot of meetings.
That's a lot.
Time of year.
Too full day.
It is that time of the year.
Staff limitations.
Yeah.
Morning question, Rich Mar, Raleigh County Clerk, first report. Uh, before he's pointing to your today, wait to know the time compared to budget report, you see in the upper right hand corner, this is for twenty twenty four is a hundred percent. Point in time of the year has passed. Uh, those respective, uh, percentages on the far right. This indicate financially, murder departments, uh, ended up personnel wise. Uh, within the respective departments. Always like to look at what commissioners is, uh. Very bottom the amount of overtime, which is just at five point eight, which isn't bad. And way this year starting out next year is might be a little bit more interesting if building storms continue because it started right after the first year. And so. That's of course commissioners, other than election, you know, election, we got a lot of overtime. Last year, but public works and, uh. Not just we will have a lot of overtime, of course, because of storms, but they do have a higher percentage budgeted than like the clerk's office or treasurer's office who. Typically doesn't have that much. They have eight percent of our budget for overtime. So we'll see where that ends up. Uh, it's, uh, not starting out well, that's for sure. Any questions on this first report commissioners? Next report is just a little bit more, uh, detailed breakdown. Uh, the respective departments, regular salary seasonal and overtime. Uh, for more detail for the commissioners to go through and look at those. Any questions on that commissioners? Next report's twenty twenty four year day budget activity report, those highlighted in the blue are those departments that have exceeded that amount or, uh, right. At that amount pushing it on the one ninety nine. Um. The one on emergency management that was due to. A, uh, employee that was started out part time and then went full time. Um, budget appropriations, that's due to the, uh, Prairie Falls, that new appropriation of five thousand dollar monthly. So that's why that, that, those are atypical to see them there. Insurance is not because, you know, we get new buildings and insurance premiums go up. And so anytime we get a new building, then you have to. Add that or the value of the buildings get adjusted. So that's not atypical. Any questions on that page commissioners?
What emergency management, the part time full time was covered by ramp?
Yeah, it's covered, correct.
I mean, it shows up there, but it was covered.
Um, yep. And just like, uh, overall, the county general, it shows over a hundred percent that it does. These numbers do not get changed for like budget amendment numbers, so. Any questions there commissioners? Next report, uh, you can see those highlighted in the blue, uh, that did exceed the hundred percent. Remember those in the bold box are all community correction, juvenile intake related, that's. Uh, split out, we had to make, uh, due to state requirements. Never used to be that way. It used to be a little. Easier as just a department to follow. Now it's. Easier for each program, I guess, but. Does cause a little bit more. Work to understand, I think. Any questions on that second page there commissioners? The, uh, Raleigh County, uh, Fire District capital outlay was due to the purchase of that last, uh, fire truck that, the last fire truck. So, uh. Yeah. For that not happen. Things in place to make sure that doesn't. Any questions on that?
That was on dollars they had.
They had the cash available. It wasn't in the.
Oh, that's, that's why dual checks, you know, and so, uh. Just because you have the cash doesn't mean you went to the public and said this to my budget. So you have to be sure both. So that's the part that would not in. Any questions on that commissioners? Next, uh, page are on enterprise funds, uh, does not take any ad foreign taxes, is just fees. And special assessments to individuals that own property or live in those, uh, benefit districts. You could see just the one Hunter's Island. Uh, went over a little bit there. I believe, uh, Brittany's, uh, talked with them and I think there may have to be some. Uh, rate adjustments coming to the commissioners to approve just to cover the cost. As part of the, uh, the problem there. I think it's cheaper unfortunately, even in the water and sewer business. Next report, twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four comparison, little snapshot. It's not always an apple's. Compared to the previous layer year, point in time, month to month, and also year to date. Uh, where departments spent their monies differently. If there's anything on there that ever catch your attention, like a little bit more further detail, we'd be glad to get that for you. Anything on those reports commissioners? Next is the twenty twenty four year day budget activity report. Uh, you can see, of course, the. Uh, largest number there missing is budget segmentation of four million dollars, of course, uh. Knock on wood, that's a good thing when you don't spend money out of there because it's meant for. You know, extreme disasters, floods. Uh, could even come in no situation, uh, ice or snowstorm tornadoes. Uh, when we need to have money ready, readily available to help the community out. You'll see personnel, uh, went over. Uh, that of course is just for separation of service bag, uh, H R and budget finance always do their best projections based on what. Employees let us know they plan on retiring. And sometimes circumstances change and people decide to retire early. And so when they do that, we have to, uh, pay out their leave earn. Any questions on that commissioners? Next report, twenty twenty four year day R C P expenses paid by Raleigh County. Like reminding commissioners and, uh, residents that Raleigh County, uh, does a budget appropriation like the city as well, but then also we are. Responsible one hundred percent for anything inmate. Uh, related as far as medical care and also facilities. Uh, that's what these costs, uh, show you. I like this next report a little bit better. It kind of gives you comparatively. Uh, from twenty twenty to twenty twenty four, in seat position. Uh, of course, medical costs have gone up, but our population has gone up drastically as well. And so those are both numbers that go in the wrong direction as far as keeping costs low. Uh, I know there's a lot of discussion on that, uh, population wise and then inmate medical, R C P D is doing a great job on. Doing what they can do to help keep those costs low. Can we meet with them regularly? And that's appreciated. Uh, but, uh, like I tell people, sometimes there is a cost of doing business and state law. Uh, we only pay what we're required to. We are required to make all of those payments to pay care of the inmates. Any questions on that commissioners? Next is twenty twenty three, uh, budget activity on offsite inmate medical, advanced recreational healthcare. Costs that go up, this one continues to go up as well. And you can see the numbers there does also show the. Average daily population at a hundred and twenty four point three. If those numbers go up, so will our costs. Any questions on that? Take a little more time commissioners, go through those reports, have any additional questions, let us know. We'd be glad to get you any information we'd like. Agenda up here.
Chad's up next.
Chad was up next.
Yeah.
Yeah. It is January.
Tell some for piles of. Reduced, it has been melting.
Mm hmm.
The.
Yeah.
Little piles or. But there's one been. The convenience store where they, they've got piles fifteen feet tall.
Where at in Riley?
Convenience store across street from us. They've got some monsters there that, that, there's going to be snow there for a long.
Yeah, there's not a lot of space around there to push it to.
One thing I noticed coming through the loop down here. They piled up the snow. You can't see until you pull out and loop because yeah, put it, they probably right on the corner. So you can't. You have to kind of stop behind them, look around them.
They had a really bad pile like that at the intersection of Total Creek Boulevard to Kimball. You know, you get that merge lane coming on and coming straight down the highway. You. I knew those cars could not see that pile was bigger than like a car would sit and it's not good. I think they've since moved it. I didn't notice it this morning, but initially it was bad.
That's what. Moving winter. Late December seventy eight started snow and had a bunch of snow that, yes. Here my son was born. Had big snowstorm ballers, he was in a hospital. We weren't sure they'd get the street player, we'll get a neighbor who had a, uh. A snowmobile was going to come pick us up. At the main road if, if they didn't, but they didn't get our road cleared. But we had. Snow on the ground. I think that was the, we had the snow on the ground for two months. Because every time they got getting melted, they get another snow.
That's what I'd have to ask my parents, but. I know definitely since I've lived here, I've never seen snow this big and shoveled this much snow and I've been here since eighty five.
I just remember January of ninety three, it's been the last one. We will, even, we got the day off from school. That didn't happen back then. Well, I went up to Warner Park to play football.
Yeah, my. Senior high school, they. Had a big snowstorm on the weekend, they call off. School Monday, people couldn't get through this, so they called off Tuesday. Monday morning, they called off Tuesday. By Tuesday, they cleared all the streets. And melted down that thing. It was the first day being they'd ever called off school because of. Weather.
Four years in high school, I think maybe. I mean, I had two days in four years, maybe. One of them was cold because they couldn't start the buses.
A lot of times that's what happens with the extreme cold. They can't get those knees started.
Riley County, probably there's all those roads that weren't open, you know? But they couldn't get a bus down some of those township roads, some of that laid out by the lake.
Yep. Yeah, no, our road didn't get cleared until Tuesday, you know?
Because they didn't have buses.
Yeah, it will not be good if we get another big snow anytime soon. I've looked at the percentage evidently they're not very confident in this storm yet because the percentages aren't very high. Uh, the chance for snow. So we'll see. Yeah, my hand. It's left and I. I'm, but Shover was hurting all weekend, really bad. I was looking for equipment yesterday afternoon and I couldn't. Think why as well. I've shoveled so much and Nancy Harmon does it all.
Listen.
And this hand, I mean, it's like. Don't want of our emergency trucks.
Don't. That's a sidebar.
We need to put a sign that's beware of windows.
Go to U T Vs with a blade on it.
Maybe they'll get rid of some of this snow.
Good luck.
Where are they going to put it?
Case state parking lot. Really been putting a lot of it.
Oh, that's.
Not a lot of people going to park up the basketball games. I know.
I do not know. You know when students come back?
Uh. Is it twenty, whatever it's a day after.
Oh, that's going to be a lot of fun until it's canceled there.
Yeah.
Good morning, Commissioner Tyler Hager, Raleigh County Treasurer with the, um, December twenty twenty four revenue information. So we ended, we ended the year, yay. So, uh, the county general, um, balance as of December thirty first, twenty twenty four was nine million, one hundred and sixty thousand, six forty four, forty seven. Our ARBA fund, um, account, um, ended with a balance of seven, just over seven point eight million. Our total fund balance as of the end of December was a hundred and thirty eight million, two fifteen eight twenty one eighty three. Just to remind you, a large. Portion of that is sitting in the tax holding fund. With first half, first half tax collections are sitting in that tax holding fund, uh, those will be distributed. Um, on the, here in January. Just to give you a comparison, twenty twenty three, we ended with a balance to, total funds of a hundred and thirty six million, one nine, one hundred and ninety two thousand. So. It's a little higher, but, um, I did do a comparison and our tax holding for this year compared to last year was a little bit higher. Our year to date interest that was deposited into the general fund was two million, nine hundred and seventy two thousand, four fifty six, sixty five. Um, we had budgeted two million for interest income for them for the calendar year twenty twenty four. Um, year to date, um, ARBA interest was six hundred and fifty thousand, six twenty four, fifty seven. Our, um, interest rate for the active checking account was four point six six percent as of the end of December. So it is. Going down just a little bit. Um, our highest C D bid for the month of December was four point four percent. General fund revenue for the month of December, total revenues after transfers was one million, one hundred and twenty one thousand, nine fifty nine. That three hundred, three hundred thousand dollar transfer in was from the motor vehicle operating fund that was budgeted, um. For, for transfer. Um, just to remind you, that is what we had decided on since all of the motor vehicle operating fund salaries are paid out of the general fund. We had budgeted a three hundred thousand dollar transfer as of the end of December. And then once again, whatever. Whatever funds are left in the motor vehicle operating fund after all of the twenty four expenses are paid will also be transferred to the general fund. Um, by the end of May. Year to date, we had, um. Total revenue, um, in the general fund of thirty nine million, one hundred and three thousand, two eighty nine. Um, we had budgeted thirty seven million, one thirty eight, nine hundred and eighty thousand. So at the, as of the end of the year, we were five point two nine percent over. Budget for, um, revenues in the general fund. And then here you can go see our total, we collected a hundred and five point two nine percent of total budgeted revenue. Love it when my numbers. Match like this. Sales tax, this, this letter, um, represents sale, the portion of the sales tax that gets to be retained by Raleigh County. For the general fund sales tax, it was two hundred and five thousand, five seventy seven, ninety nine. Which is six point two three percent higher than December of twenty twenty three. And it was twenty three point three five percent over what was budgeted for the month. Year to date for the general fund sales tax, we came in at sixteen point nine seven percent over what was budgeted. Which we had budgeted two million dollars for twenty twenty four. The road and bridge sales tax. We deposited two hundred and thirty four thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars and ninety five cents. Five point oh seven percent higher than December of twenty twenty three, and it represented a forty point eight six percent over. Five point oh seven percent higher than December of twenty twenty three, and it represented a forty point eight six percent over what was budgeted for the month. The road and bridge sales tax, um, we had budgeted two million and. Total year to date sales tax that was retained by Riley County was two million six hundred and eighty four thousand five hundred and seven dollars and fifty four cents. Which is thirty four thirty percent over what was budgeted for the year. To the general fund, total sales tax that was collected in Riley County was two point three oh three percent higher than um, December of twenty twenty three. And the road bridge was nineteen point five percent lower than December of twenty three. For this next year, we should be able to see apples to apples because it'll be the full year for the new self road road bridge sales tax. So. Those numbers won't be quite as skewed going forward. Um, this just shows you the breakdown of uh, how those sales tax dollars came into the county. And this final slide just shows you of the total sales tax, how it was putting down between the. The cities within the county. Any questions on any of that information? Um, just to kind of give you an update on kind of how we ended the year in the treasurer's office. Um, from a motor vehicle, from a motor vehicle standpoint, we had total transactions of seventy seven thousand five hundred and ninety three. Which was a four point eight five percent increase compared to the number of motor vehicle transactions processed last year. Um, of that, we had a two point three five percent increase in registrations and a four point six percent increase in titles. I also do, I do a report to see how much of our taxes. Are paid electronically either by a credit card or e-check, whether that's in the office. Um, eleven percent of all real estate and property tax transactions were paid by either a credit card or e-check. And forty five percent of our motor vehicle transactions were paid with a credit card or e-check. There's always a, there's always a question as to, you know, why we have that convenience fee, but. Um, there's just absolutely no way if we had to cover those credit card fees, I mean. We would, there's just no way we could cover that. So, um. It always does surprise me how many people do still pay with even in the office with a credit card or a. Or a debit card instead of writing a check, but.
Got a generation who doesn't know much about checks.
That is true. Um. We are getting ready to um, really be very busy with our heavy trucks, trailers, commercial vehicles and IRP registrations. Those are all due by the end of February. Um, this is an extremely busy time for our staff because those transactions do take a little extra time. Um, because we are short an employee. We are going to be um, not offering driver's license services for the month of February, and I will come back again in early. Um, at the end of January to remind the public of that. This will allow us to be fully staffed. At the counter, with the exception of the one person that we're currently missing, um, to be able to process those transactions. Um, and so I will. Put that information out again in January. Um, other than that, we're. Ready to start twenty twenty five. If there are any information that you would like to see. For this upcoming year differently, um, please don't hesitate to let me know. I'll be happy to bring you any other information that you might want to see. Other than that, I'll stand for questions and. All right, well, happy happy twenty twenty five.
Thank you, Shallow. Next commissioner, you have press conference at nine thirty. How you doing? Good. How's John?
Good.
Ready for the next now?
Yep. They're all practicing.
Huh?
They're all practicing, starting to ready to go.
Look, we're starting this one out down the track.
Yes. And maybe.
Get everything else repaired? Or working on it?
They had. Saturday, suppose the city. Yeah, it's wrong Saturday and Sunday. People who's calling only about the street has had a list one hundred and fifty. My son had to go out. They drove everyone to see which ones could be done and which ones.
Mm hmm.
You know, some of them had been done after they but they had to listen. To make a list for the day for what they had where they had to go. Spent the day Saturday driving around on five streets.
Yeah, that was Friday. I had to drop. My youngest daughter lives over on Mission. And went to drop her off some stuff. And couldn't get down the road because there was a truck stuck in the middle of the road in the city street. So I pulled him out. I had a tow rope in my truck, so I pulled him out and. Delivered her stuff and I could see half a block down. There was another car stuck. And I didn't pull them out because of, you know, those cars, it's hard.
It's hard to find something to throw them.
And then if you pull and rip their plastic bumper off, it's so low. So. I didn't want to be responsible for that. I feel bad doing it, but.
Yeah, it's hard to find something switched in the pocket of a car.
Yeah. And she was. In at an angle against the curb and another vehicle, so that had gotten the back end. Yeah. Felt bad going around her, but.
Right side of all the snow. I bet we're gonna place even higher snow rebellion. With all this practice.
Yeah, so.
God bless.
Got that practice cooking.
There's making lemonade out of lemons. Warren Alvin.
Morning.
What's that? How you doing? Like our balmy weather?
Yeah. You don't love it.
Not quite Florida weather.
Yeah, it's definitely not Florida. Oh, my gosh.
Welcome back to Kansas.
Yeah. Cold too for them. They're dying down there.
What is it? How cold is it there? Thirty?
I think it even got down in the twenties.
Oh, they would be dying down there.
Yeah, for them. I mean, they're not prepared for it at all. It's like getting snow in Atlanta, you know, they even can't handle it.
Yeah, one of my daughters lives in Texas and they got that snow last week and she said it like. A little snow and it like shut everything down, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's always so easy.
Three seconds. Yeah. For the. Here for the proclamation.
Okay, um, whereas January twentieth, twenty twenty five marks the observance of. Doctor Martin Luther King Junior Federal Law Day and Service Day. Established by Public Law Number ninety eight one forty four in nineteen eighty three. And whereas the King Holiday and Service Act highlights remembrance, celebration and encourages. People everywhere to reflect on the principles of nonviolent social change, racial equality, community and humanitarian service. And interracial cooperation. And whereas Dr. Martin Luther King Junior devoted his life to advancing equality, social justice and opportunity for all. It challenged all Americans to participate in the never ending work of building a more perfect nation. And whereas celebrating Doctor King's life and spirit through community wide recognition and service on the King Holiday. Is an appropriate way to honor Doctor King. Bringing our citizens together, strengthening our communities and nation. And whereas it is appropriate for Riley County to support a community celebration, observance of the King Holiday. And a day of service honoring Doctor Martin Luther King Junior. And whereas each of us can and must contribute to making our communities better with increased opportunity for all citizens. And now therefore, we county commissioners of Riley County. Do hear rock playing January eighteenth and twenty fifth, twenty twenty five. Doctor Martin Luther King Junior Community Celebration and Day of Service in Riley County, Kansas. Urge all people to join and pay tribute to the life and works of Doctor Martin Luther King Junior. And by his life and teachings of service to inspire others to serve and remember his spirit of community. Witness thereof, we have. We have here unto set our hands and cause the seal of January. We affix this Monday, January thirteenth, twenty twenty five.
And comments.
Sure.
Yeah.
Thank you for having us. I'm Suzanne LeWard. And this is Pat Hudgens, and we are both chairs of the Manhattan Martin Luther King Memorial Committee's. Annual Art and Writing Contest. Um. And our theme for this year was. Um. We are bound together in a single garment of destiny. And that is a quote coming directly from Doctor King's letter from the burning in jail. Um, and we felt like that was an appropriate. Thought to reflect on um, in this year. And I wanted to share um, a little bit about the events that are scheduled. Uh, we have, um, so the the students have participated in the art writing contest. Um, and uh. Um, those winners will be announced at the community celebration. And winners also will be displayed at the Art Center, Manhattan Art Center. Um, for a couple of weeks afterwards. Um, so I wanted to let you know the community celebration is on Saturday, this coming Saturday. Um, January eighteenth at two o'clock at the Manhattan Art Center. And the speaker is Curtis Pitts, who is the president and CEO of the International Institute to Improve Race Relations. Um, so we'll look forward to that. On Monday, the um, federal holiday. There will be a free showing of the movie Selma at the Wairum. And that is brought to you by collaboration of the Manhattan. Memorial Committee um, and the Juneteenth Committee. Um, and on. Uh, Saturday, the twenty fifth. Is a full day of community service organized by Hands-on K State in honor of Doctor King. Um, and then on the thirty first at one thirty is the laying of the wreath at the bust of Doctor King on the K State campus. Um, and Pat maybe will um, share a little bit more about the contest and um, and the community celebration and who all has helped. So thank you for this opportunity. Um, one of the things that we mentioned that movies at two o'clock on the night. At the Wairum, and it is free. Now open to the public. So we're excited about that. And we just wanted to thank, we have so many community people, but you know, we get together and collaborate with a lot of our. Um, Black Breeds on campus in the community. So the graduate chapters of Alpha Phi Alpha Sorority Incorporated. And we were the judges for all the contest entries, which was. It's just so sweet for the students to be involved. It just is heartwarming to read all the poems and. Their their take on what that that means from the pain. And then we have the Delta Sigma Beta Sorority Incorporated, Sigma Mu Rosority Incorporated, and Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated. As well as other community people. So thank you so much. Thank you. And if you have any questions?
Thank you.
And one, two, three. One more. One, two, three. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for listening.
Since we were all resting.
The second one, let's start the anniversary. Not prepared with something. Uh, first one comes from One Nation. Uh, out of New Wilmington, Pennsylvania. Separate copies, okay. Showing. It's a total bid of one hundred and thirty nine thousand nine hundred and eighty nine dollars. Stuff and stuff I have to figure out. Oh, it's listed on there. Yeah, I'm not seeing anything. The other ones are just pictures there. There's two copies of it.
Oh, I think that beacon, is that new? Is it new?
Better be. Yeah, I guess you have to take that. Well, you never know. Okay.
It's a one, one nation distribution. One hundred and thirty nine thousand nine hundred and eighty nine dollars.
Uh, bid number two is from Russian surprises.
Thank you.
In the city, yeah, Kansas City, Missouri. Yeah, that is one hundred and thirty eight thousand. Nine hundred and eighty dollars. That does list approximately three. That does list approximately three hundred and sixty days.
Next bid is from last truck center. One, one hundred and thirty-eight thousand, nine hundred and eighty dollars. Delivery date, approximately three hundred and sixty days.
Next one I have is from Truck Center Companies out of Salina, Kansas. Thing I see here is one hundred and thirty thousand, three hundred and forty-eight. His estimated delivery date would be June first, twenty twenty-five. Yeah, right? Got a whole bunch of elements too.
Yeah. Truck Center Companies, Salina. Bid one hundred and thirty thousand, three hundred and forty-eight dollars. Estimated delivery, June first, twenty-five.
Next one on the list is, uh, Ruckner's Truck Sales. That's how it also had a Salina. And I'm seeing on that one is one hundred and fifty-nine thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. And it says approximately August of twenty-five. There's a second bid on that one, too. Second bid is one hundred and forty-eight thousand, three hundred and seventy-two dollars.
That's a different truck.
Yeah. Same thing, August of twenty-five delivery.
Ruckner's Truck Equipment. First bid, one hundred and fifty-nine thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars, approximately August of twenty-five for delivery. Second bid, one hundred and forty-eight thousand, three hundred and seventy-two dollars, August twenty-five delivery.
People listening to. Uh, it is from Next Tran Truck Center, Kansas City, Missouri. First bid I see here is a hundred and forty-nine thousand, six hundred and ninety. It says July of twenty twenty-five. Second bid is a hundred and fifty-four thousand, nine hundred and eighty-eight. It's this June or July. Twenty-five on this one. Lots of stuff there, sorry. Here's the riverbank too.
Next Tran. First bid. Let me think of my Volvo for a Volvo. One hundred and forty-nine thousand, six hundred and ninety, July twenty-five delivery. That bid is worth max one hundred and fifty-four thousand, nine hundred and eighty-eight, the June or July twenty-five delivery.
Do I have Master Tech Truck Equipment out of Wichita? Listen separately, so. Okay. It's a base bid here of a hundred and seventy-four thousand, one hundred and forty-three dollars. And then if you want an extended warranty, it's listed as eighteen thousand, two hundred and eleven. For a total of a hundred and ninety-two, three hundred and fifty-four. If I can repeat that if we need to.
Yeah, what was the base?
Base was one seventy, one hundred and seventy-four thousand, one hundred and forty-three.
John or Alvin, did you require the one-year warranty or is the base bid?
Should be just matter of fact.
This one's extended for seven years, two hundred thousand.
Okay, so the base bid's over, really interested in?
Master Tech Wichita. Truck price, one hundred and seventy-four thousand, one hundred and forty-three. And extended warranty to seven years, eighteen thousand, two hundred and eleven. Delivery date, chassis is available for delivery upon approval.
That's that part of it, yeah.
So this doesn't include that?
Once a kid's. That she, there it is. Okay, this comes complete with all kinds of extras, so I don't know if we need to go through that list, but the uh, handle tandem axle dump truck with central hydraulic system. They're listing that at two hundred and eighty-three thousand, five hundred and eighty-nine dollars, five cents. This is ninety days after approval. There's difference in. Things attached.
Well, we have staff looking at it.
It also from Master, Master Tech. Truck price, two hundred and eighty-three thousand, five hundred and eighty-nine dollars, five cents. Say various alternates for snow plow, salt spreader. Delivery ninety days after approval. But that's also similar.
Well, I would make a motion to return all the bids to staff for their suggestion.
A second.
Then moved and suggested to send these to staff for review and recommendations, all in favor.
Time for Brittany Commissioners.
Good morning, Commissioner, for even of such a inviting selfless word here to open the monthly cash flows for December. We'll start off with economic development. A lot of change here from the past few months. So no revenue has been brought in, no expenditures occurred in the month of December, bringing our total unencumbered cash balance to three hundred and fifteen thousand, one hundred and twenty-eight dollars. Any questions on that? Next, we have county building. We brought in twenty-one thousand, one hundred and twelve dollars in revenue. And then, of course, also thirty-three dollars and fifty cents in reimbursements, bringing our total revenue for the year to three hundred and thirty-eight thousand, three hundred and seventy-eight dollars. We also spent twenty-one thousand, three hundred and twenty-two dollars in the month of December, bringing our unencumbered cash balance to one hundred and ninety-two thousand, six hundred and twenty-seven dollars. Any questions on that one? Next, we have CIP. We had a reimbursement of twenty-six thousand, five hundred and eighteen dollars. And we spent seventy-seven thousand, four hundred and sixty-four dollars, bringing our total unencumbered cash balance to twenty-six million, one hundred and seventy-four thousand, seven hundred and forty-nine dollars. Any questions on any of those? Next, we have a half-cent sales tax. We did spend seven thousand, three hundred and eight dollars. And that brings our unencumbered cash balance to five million, five hundred and forty-nine thousand, nine hundred and eighty-nine dollars. Any questions on that one? The next is the point two sales tax. We brought in two hundred and thirty-four thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars in revenue. We have no expenditures for the year, bringing our unencumbered cash balance to four million, eight hundred and forty-five thousand, three hundred and sixty-three dollars. I also included ARPA in here. So this is just the budget summary that we had for the different projects. And then here's our ARPA, our internal ARPA tracking sheet, so you can kind of see where we're at on expenditures. And the different requests that we've had in the past, but that's just a different list. So University Park, uh, fire station. And then, of course, EMS station. This one is actually completed. And so we have a remaining balance left of the road that's originally approved. And then now we have EMS headquarters that is ongoing. And then we have as well. Any questions on ARPA? Almost got you back.
Richard, let me know when you're ready to go. Okay, so, uh, WD County Councilor Jacob Hansen here today. Um, we have before you a resolution on rising the real estate tax foreclosure sale. Uh, this is kind of an annual event for us, and we need this resolution in order to file a petition to get that tax foreclosure sale process going. Uh, and to have the courts essentially sell the property so we can recoup that tax, delinquent tax amount. Um, you'll notice that there's about a hundred and thirty-six tracks of real estate currently. Uh, we do expect that there will be a number of people who redeem this week. I'm sure we'll see plenty. Uh, and then we'll adjust accordingly. Um, one, one interesting thing to note that I think you guys would be interested to hear is that there does appear to be a an uptake in the amount of actual homes included in this foreclosure sale. Now, I wasn't privy to this information last year, so I can't really tell you the specifics, but that's just what I've been told, is that we're seeing a little bit of an uptick there. So maybe something to keep in mind for, you know, other information that you guys deal with. So any, any questions you guys have on the tax foreclosure sale process? Uh, one thing I forgot to mention is that we plan to file hopefully Friday. Uh, after, of course, you guys approve this, if you guys approve this, and then the sale will take place sometime around July.
Usually most of them redeem. We now know.
Yeah, I mean, I've heard that there's a couple. Yeah, they get redeemed. I don't know about most. Um, we'll, we'll just have to see that it, like I said, the interesting thing is that there's more homes. So people have more reasons to want to redeem in this case, so.
I just had a question. I'm sure the wording's been the same, but hadn't noticed that.
Sure.
It says, "Hundred and thirty-six tracks which have been sold and bid bid in by Rada County at previous length of tax sales."
Yeah, so, so that process, it's, it's a weird process. It's a little archaic in its form. It's based on the statutory language where when a taxpayer becomes delinquent on their property, we actually, as the county, bid in what's statutorily called bidding in on the home. And then there's a length amount of time that occurs afterwards that they have to redeem the property without it hitting the foreclosure sale.
Five years.
I believe so, yeah, four or five years.
Okay, it's the first year it's on. We in effect bid on it and then.
Yeah, we don't actually make it. We don't actually like make a bid or anything. It's very strange.
It's just the, the language required. Okay. I just, it was odd. I hadn't noticed it in there before.
Yeah.
We had to get on the tax foreclosure sale, they have to be delinquent three years.
Oh, three years.
But I tell everyone, you think you own your property, just don't pay your taxes for three years and you'll see.
True, very true. Oh, yeah. And maybe just an aside for your guys' information, we do set up payment plans. If anybody from the public is listening, if they were willing to work with people to make sure that, you know, they don't end up here, we're more than happy to do that. We don't want to go through this if we don't have to. Um, so please contact our office. Uh, you know, we're willing to work, but we've got a short time period to get that done, so.
Okay. I make a motion that the board approve the resolution as submitted.
Second.
Been moving second to approve the resolution for the, excuse me, real estate tax foreclosure sale, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All briefly signed.
Not supposed to be signing stuff anymore, Rich.
You know that.
Yes, I do.
The first year, that's a bad, we take, the first year we take over, but then. A good portion of those are those properties over the summer. No houses on those things.
Well, it's more of some lots, again.
They didn't take all of them, yeah, it was sixty, eight or something.
Those are the ones at the habitat. Isn't that fun?
Playing a part there unfortunately.
I know. So until Thursday, I'm on there for at least an hour and a half. Good morning Commissioners, Brittany Phillips, Budget and Finance Officer. Here to discuss now a, a request to transition from Diamond Pharmaceuticals to Clinical Solutions. Um, this request actually came from Captain Mark Fresh, we have been working with him, it feels like almost all of twenty twenty four, trying to prepare this and, uh, get it kind of worked through, uh, but Clinical Solutions has won the state bid. Um, and it is a much more efficient process, I don't know, he got a box and he'll show you guys, but um, it is also supposed to be, um, a cost reduction for us as well, um, I mean, you guys saw the numbers today, we did spend a lot at the jail, and so Mark has really done an incredible job in trying to reduce costs, um, so he's gonna pass out um, that cost, and he'll kind of show you, and then I'll pack a letter and take you over.
So, one of the things we've tried to do is reduce costs, at the same time I keep asking for additional medical, and so this is one thing I think we can do to do a little of both our famous call tool, the company, one of the, like Brittany was saying about a year ago with the state. Uh, they do jails, correctional facilities, uh, they're based out in Tennessee. They were actually recommended to us by our current nursing contract, medical contract, and an option to explore or look at as a a competitive against our current, uh, which is Diamond Pharmaceutical. Uh, they plan, and I met with the salesman multiple times, to be a ten percent reduction in cost, the actual cost of the medication is not worth the reduction. It's the fact that because of the way it's sent, the box I'm sitting around, believe it or not, there's not full of medication.
And they're all expired too.
Uh, but it's an example, what currently has to happen when our medicine comes in, our pharmaceutical, is it's usually blister packs. And because we don't have twenty four seven nursing, obviously, the nurse handles money through Friday, and now things for accounting, some of the weekends are getting covered. Uh, actually preparing the med, so that's actually going through, and you figure almost over fifty percent of our inmates are on some form of medications. So you're looking at sixty, you know, sixty plus meds that have to be individually popped out of blister pack, put in the container, loaded onto a car, and taken to each pod, this happens twice a day. Um, we have med officers that are corrections officers, they get about eight hours training a year. It is a very stressful situation for them, takes them about an hour to an hour and a half, sometimes just to prep the med, so that's one CO that's out for an hour and an hour and a half, just to prep meds for the evening pass on. Just cuts that time down drastically, we reached out to Lyon County, they use the same J M S system, uh, that our salesmen's, uh, jail management system. Uh, they transitioned a couple months back. They're not gonna say whether they're saving any money yet, they don't think they're spending anymore, they think they're gonna see a savings because when an inmate leaves, that's an automatic notification of stop saying the med. And therefore we don't give a whole blister pack for thirty days, inmates only in there eight days, some of that you can return, some you can't. But that's where the savings come from, not that they're selling the best solution. Uh, this will save a lot of time and stress on my employees as well, that's another reason I really like permission. And then the unique relationship we have with the county. Uh, and I really appreciate, uh, Largo, Brian, Brittany, I have been asking for a lot this year, but for me, it's a big learning lesson on it, it's a unique relationship that I have with the county, and the fact that I approve a lot of medical expenses that y'all have to pay. Um, so I'm trying to be as transparent about it, and see what we can do, maybe save some money while we also increase the medical coverage in the jail, uh, in some areas where the inmate population rises, put a lot of stress on it. So this is one of those things I'm asking, and I think after talking with Brittany and, uh, Largo, it's all I need is your permission to change this pharmaceutical, I don't know, that kind of help is working, so that's what I'm asking for today. And, uh, I've already, with clinical solution, we're not, I'm not gonna sign a contract, but we can change back at any time, we may sign a contract two or three months down the road, but I told them I won't sign a year contract until I see that their product actually works. But we're not blocking into anything here, and we can always go back to that.
Now, the box you sent around, this is proposed, what it's gonna come in like?
Yep, and then they come in and it say Wednesday P M, and it's actually broken by pod and alphabetical, uh, which there again.
So they determine who gets what.
A lot of time, and we also, we do keep stock on hand. But then when we have inmates coming in on our more common pharmaceutical, we'll have the ability to read that as quickly as we, we always have been.
It's a lot more efficient.
We're hoping, and the other, the other two in Kansas, and now they're up to, I think, five or six, uh, local correctional facilities, the transition, but the two I talked to are very happy. How important, they think, and they're, both of them said the same thing, Butler County and Lyon, take so much stress off their employee. For me, that, that in itself, it costs are equal, and well, we're trying. You have any questions, but, there you go.
We have checked with A C H, they were okay with the change, uh, like I said, it was like a sixty day window that they're giving us, so that we don't have to sign a contract, it's a trial basis for sixty days, and then, um, we do have to notify Diamond Pharmaceutical if we choose to change over thirty days notice, so.
With your permission, I expect us to be transitioned over with every, let's say, forty five to sixty days, or someone just go think we need to be taking care of scheduled training and stuff like that.
We try. Yeah, um, okay, well, I'll go ahead, make a motion, um, with a request to approve the transition from Diamond Pharmaceutical to Clinical Solutions.
I would second that.
Been moved and seconded to approve the transition, uh, like the jail for Diamond Pho- Diamond Pharmaceuticals to Clinical Solutions, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, one last thing, on behalf of Riley County Police Department, with the snowstorm and everything. Uh, your staff was phenomenal, the amount of work, uh, they put in to make sure that our facility, especially with the jail, were really tight, they brought down specialized equipment, worked with us, communicated well, very much appreciated by the police department.
Same in return, you guys had quite a bit of accidents and everything else to deal with, so.
Yeah, it wasn't as bad, you couldn't literally get on the road.
So we expect to see those accident numbers drop next month.
We don't have anything to sign on it?
Do not, as he said, no contract. Commissioner, Mr. Element, ten ten.
A lot of things.
Yeah.
Not any long things, but.
That's the only way we're able to get everything done and make up for lost time.
All lost meetings. Total three meetings.
Told Zinni to see what she could do either that, or I was gonna ask the Commissioners for a long day. Done that before. You don't get to talk about snow, are you? Question is the last one or the next one coming?
I'm gonna talk about the last one.
No kidding. It's like your typical jump draw.
But if you sort of John, like, lady your employees, we appreciate all the work, and yeah, I'm sure they spent a lot of hours.
Lot of hours, a lot of tired employees, um, Alvin probably, one of the more hours spent than, a lot of them are just as much as some of our guys did. Um, up early in the morning checking before the guys come in, out late past when some of the guys are gone. Yeah, he was pretty wore out Wednesday afternoon.
Oh, I bet.
Alright, so.
Yeah, you don't, um, realize how important roads are until they're covered with fifteen inches of snow. So, yeah, very much so appreciated, but.
That was a rough, rough one for one of them, uh, starting with the ice on Saturday, how we can talk about that, so, right off the bat, starting with the ice on Saturday. Uh, all day Wednesday, wind blowing twenty five plus, uh, which doesn't allow us to do a whole heck of a lot, so, just that wind puts us behind a good. And then getting out on Tuesday, Wednesday. Again, on Thursday, came back a little bit, try to do some more on Friday, and I had one employee bring them Thursday, cleaned up a couple roads that had blown back over, shaved. There, you said it needs to be hit again and treated again, so. Um, we spent somewhere around, and this is not anywhere close to tolls, and I know I don't have the tolls for the day up through Tuesday. We only hit through three hundred tons, that's all that's been reported so far, was through Tuesday, three hundred tons of salt. Alvin had already ordered by Wednesday another twenty loads of salt to replenish what we. That day, and then my salary and equipment is up to a hundred thousand even before the end of Tuesday, without everybody reporting their time. Big storm. Big deal for us.
Greg, ask you a question.
Yeah.
What's our salt supply like, and then what's the prognosis on the next twenty loads, given a lot of people put in more requests?
So. See, Wednesday afternoon, we had a call. To, I think we got a couple of those delivered on Thursday, Friday, Friday. So we are we are stocked, and then we are getting stocked as we speak, and I think they're still coming in. And it's not been a delay so far.
They still getting from Canoplis or Lyon?
I think it was Lyon.
Thanks.
Projects going on, Kid Creek, Covert, it actually did start January second, and then removed the bridges on the second and the third. Um, and after that, then I don't suppose that anybody was out there until maybe today, I guess, let's see what they could do, I think. There'd be some earthwork moving from, uh, contractor, recent construction to get ready to set the box in there. We've learned mills, we're still working on right of ways and permits, right away, really, I think is where we're at with it. Um, getting close to wanting to set a bid date on it. I do have a contract finished from our lab. Um, kind of a little bit waiting for the city to I, I wanna have the agreement with the city before I really finalize the contract will finish on the, on the project. Previous, the snow, we're prepping for snow, doing some root seasonal park maintenance, um, removing trees, replant some trees, uh, we moved a tree from the F C R C parking lot. Um, there was two trees there by the trash container. One of walking side around a corner, the other one, tripping sap and up sap on vehicles that the employees there wanted every move, so we got them removed and taken care of before then. Some park crews did a lot of snow cleanup, um, on the first parking lots, um, all the buildings are part of them, not just we. Health Department, F C R C, and, um, they cleaned the merge or E M S parking lot in, in front of the buildings, I think some of that between them and not just we, I get confused who does what. Um, they spent a lot of time down here um, to get ready for Wednesday, and come into work, and then again, Friday, and this morning, yeah, putting number on the court out some more. Operations crew, um, same preference for winter snow, um, did some small structure inspections, created roads, re trimming, um, and corrected lengths before the snow, and now that the snow is, will be pushing and moving and widening roads up the next week or so, um, probably next two weeks for sure, getting ready for the next one to come. Whenever that is, and hopefully not very soon. Um, open positions, I can purchase a gadget, building maintenance tech, that had been taken off the off the website and off the advertising for a while, um, I did some changes to the job descriptions. Um, built in a, a tech two position. So, hopefully, maybe we can find an employee that has a qualification maybe as a two, but wouldn't take the job because of the pay was too low to be a one. Um, and take it, that worked out, and so, and then, uh, we have a facility in Brownstown position, hope we're still there. We've been doing some interview. University of Good Culture and Environment Studies completed, we're working on satisfying grant requirements to make sure we get those grant dollars that we were promised. This line for the old V M S has begun, Station for Emergency Management. They're moving right along on the headquarters station, and now it's we'll schedule time in here to get an update from V H S for these, um, here in the next couple weeks. Um, C P, this building window replacement project, um, called Bruce in here the other day measuring the front door, um, Snow and stuff put him a little bit behind, we were looking at a first and second week, February bid opening, but it may be closer to the end of February to do that. And still logistics on how we do that's gonna be a little bit tricky, I think. So, that's all I have, um, if you have any questions or comments, I will.
Thanks, Sean, next measure, Russell's to keep ten twenty five.
Thanks Sean, next mission, Russell's to keep ten twenty-five.
You know, a lower brush pile like that, because ours was good sized.
The house construction project all year and tree removal and. How that zero degrees at night burning it, how close you can get and not really feel that heat because. It had, it would generate heat, you could see the sparks going up. Seventy feet in the air, but. You know, a lower brush pile like that, because ours was good size. The house construction project all year and tree removal and. How that zero degrees at night burning it, how close you can get and not really feel that heat because. It had, it would generate heat, you could see the sparks going up. Seventy feet in the air, but. Perfect conditions to do that, though, only time to do that.
Although we didn't get a page for. On Thursday.
Really? Oh, gotcha.
Really?
Had they not called the burn in or had they, they did, good, good.
Oh, there's a chance for stone building.
Yeah, and Monday and then fifteenth for a high on Monday and.
That night it got to ten below. Luckily I saw it before, as you're going to bed, but I smelled some gas earlier. Back by the furnace. A little bit, I said, when I told Janet, I said, we need to know something, because it's not bad, but it's. And I'd gone upstairs, I came back, yeah, I went, what is the stove? In there, that must be in there. It got cold down here, went in, it's seventy degrees, it tells five degrees below, but. Uh oh, so I'm back, tried to turn on the stove. I say, we were, we were going to bed, I called both, well, called the local people, said, we're out. I don't, we switched. Uh people this year. I don't know why you didn't catch it, you didn't. And I looked back, they had always refilled this. Middle of the end, you know, sometime now the twentieth.
Yeah, reminded my son this weekend to check his.
Had a shift to just, you know, I've never, I've. You know, I've lived there since oh six and never run out. Switch suppliers and.
Do you have to, you have to contract them?
Yeah, pay for it, pay for it in August.
Best price for propane, July, August. Generally.
Pay for the year's worth and that's the platforms.
Good news is, you know, the ladies in the office for years have always. Kept track and go with the old wives tale, you know, the first snow you get is the numbers. On that day is the number of snows you're gonna get that year, and it's amazingly, unfortunately, pretty accurate. I mean, the lady to take. Kept track of that for like decades. First snow was on the thirtieth this year.
Oh, just that dust, that light.
So we're down to twenty-six left. Russell might cry.
Go ahead, Russ. Morning Commissioners, Russell Stig, new but first agent county fired. I have my subversive staff time with the board. Um just some of the highlights was uh on the emergency management side, Lori and I were invited to. Participate in the K State's uh interview process for their new emergency management director, and so. That was interesting, you know, they had some really good candidates that one that I felt really stood out, I mean, there's, but. We'll see what they, what they choose, I haven't heard, they've chosen anybody yet, but it's a. Fairly long drawn process of getting hired by the university apparently. So uh that was interesting, uh we're taking applications, we've received, received several applications for our planner position. Most of them don't have too many qualifications or experience. But I think we have at least a couple that are, we're going to. Looked at it, so and there have, were a couple more coming over the weekend, and I have a study, so there may be a special one also. As you know, I had a successful trip to uh. Uh Delaware in Canada, we received the Delaware truck and. Not only did we receive that truck, although it was covered with road salt. Ice and it made it appear safely, a little dirty, but safely, and didn't want to start very good because it was really cold. To get it off the truck, but they got off. But not only did we get it, uh it came whole. Of good stuff, they, and they told us, they said, yeah, we got a lot of stuff in our storage room. We're gonna see how many of your departments we fill up, so we got a lot of nice nozzles and. Truckload of hoes and a lot of extras on it, so you know. I, I don't think I'd hesitate, you know, to go buy that stuff new. There's probably at least twenty thousand. Stuff on there that was despair, when they buy a new truck, they buy all new stuff for it, so. We, we made out extra go a hundred and. Um got there, Doug and Dave uh. Got the truck back from Arizona. And so we've got that truck, which I had here a few weeks ago before you become on look at. And when the weather is a little bit better, we'll bring. The Canada truck should get shipped. They should have received their check today, so it shouldn't get shipped. Hopefully this week and uh so. Good, good things to report there. Of course, we had uh. Lieutenant Ross Fox funeral, uh got pedaled on, the family was very happy with, with uh. What we uh helped them put together for the funeral service, so that was good. Station one ten in University Park, um they got the dirt work, uh footers and concrete all poured. Uh the building should be uh delivered uh. Anytime and then they'll start getting it erected once it actually arrives and other permits, so. I think uh Bryant has been working with Doug on getting uh. The right paperwork in place for Evergy to get a power line put in. And then Evan, Public Works has been working to get. All the details that have to be done, waterline being extended. And sewer line being extended, so. With uh help from other departments. That project will.
I, I have one other thing to add, get another shout out of thanks to the University Park Improvement Board. Uh improvement district board, because they're helping us with a license till. So that we don't have to go through a whole amusement process, since it's all. Going all land anyway, so it's. It's an example of everybody working together.
So um. I left my stack of these laying on my desk, so I will bring those back up to you, but. We have some uh the runs for the month of December, then we have a chart for uh. The different call breakdowns. For uh. All of twenty twenty-four, so I thought you might find that interesting, and then a five year call total. And then uh. Some other information that I thought I'd bring along. Was as far as like if this, uh you know, we had a, a. We would have had. Well, that's what, did you, Brian, do you have a chance to do the declaration?
Oh, not yet, we'll work on that.
So I think my recommendation is to go ahead and I talked to a couple of you that uh there at the end of the week last week about. Go ahead and do a disaster declaration, just in case there is funding that becomes available. I don't think there will be from the fact that they're on flooding and stuff, they're a little more um. Generous on snowstorms, it is really hard to collect. And in that, the packets that I had for you, but I left them on my desk, so I'll bring it back down a little bit. So FEMA talks about record or near record snowfall, so to qualify as a disaster for snow. It has to be record or near records snowfall. And it's not set in stone, but it kind of has to be within ten percent of a record snowfall. My, not according to uh NOAA's records, so.
Well, how far back does it go?
Nineteen hundred.
Oh, that far back?
Yeah, so, well, actually into the eighteen nineties is how far it goes. And our, our official, I just called them this morning, the Weather Service Office, just to confirm. Our official record snowfall for the Manhattan area, it's eighteen inches and nineteen hundred. And our official, the reporting stations that they have. For this snowfall, our official record snowfall, according to the Weather Service Office of P D. For um January second, we received thirteen quarter two inches. And but, so what you have to keep in mind is that day, yeah, we got more snow. January third and a little bit of stuff on January first, but it's in a one day period. So the total snowfall over the three days. Is.
I understand, but on a twenty-four hour period would have actually started on Saturday.
So, so that's how they, that's how they figure it. So, you know, whether. I agree or disagree, you know, it's kind of material, K D M is gonna submit now the one. The one uh. Possibility is that if you're a contentious county to another one that had record or near records snowfall. Then you can be included, so, so you know, with Clay or Dickinson or Bobon City, you know, pot. One of those actually hit within ten percent of their records snowfall. Then every county that touches them can be included. So there is still a possibility and, and I sent out the email to, to the um. Property Department has about key tractor expenses, and there's different expenses that are, that are uh acceptable. And there's some that are emergency, it's going. You know, snowplow lead and they know it's a fire truck to an emergency call, you know, those are emergency expenses. Um, excuse me, uh. You know, some regular hours are not, are not a uh. Approved expense, but any overtime hours are so on, so we work with that. Uh you know, we'll follow up and, and keep tabs on it, the state isn't successful at getting a presidential declaration, you know. There's a chance, even though we officially didn't get within ten percent of our records snowfall. We could still be included because of the continuous, being contentious to another area that did, so, so. Keep track of that. And I asked, you know, not only for the Manhattan area, but you know, it was Randolph or Winterville. And they're gonna look, they, they, they're recording, they have a recording station in Tullip, President Lord now. You know, is that down here at the core office or is it up north up the lake, you know, I don't know that for sure. The uh. Record for the total reporting station, wherever it is, it's from nineteen sixty eleven. And so that may exceed, depending on, but, but they don't, they don't get a report on this one, so they need to reach out to. Whoever manages that reporting station, see what they actually had, so there still is possibility that. Will have a record or near record snowfall in Roundly County. It's just not at the official Manhattan reporting station. And like the airport is another reporting station, and they didn't get a report from them yet, so there is still a possibility, but. Um, and as far as, go ahead.
I was gonna say, I work just north of there and I measured sixteen and a quarter.
Russell, do you have any idea, because how in God's green earth would anyone get an accurate? Count on snow that's going north and south twenty-five miles now?
I, I can give you a good explanation, I mean, there's the, I don't remember what it stands for, there's the Coco Ross Network, and that's. A partnership between K State and the Weather Service and uh. The other agency that they're all pointing on right now, and they have, you know, special rain gauges and, and I think they. Use those for snowfall too, and, and they have different systems, but I can't.
It's like it'd be impossible to get inaccurate.
Yeah, so I, I, I can't give you a good answer on how they come up with that.
I'm sure they have a methodology that's adopted, but who, who even knows if it's accurate, how accurate it is.
Right, it's uh just like down here, you know, out in front of here compared to just around the corner, it was pretty clear in front of this building. Like not where my vehicles parked around the corner. And you know, very multiple feet difference from one with the other, but. As far as our staff, you know, similar to. Similar to uh. What John was reporting, you know, we were. Doug and Jake and I were, were. Doug and Jake were mostly in the field, we have one truck with a snow plow. We go plow all fifteen stations out and try and plow them out, so that's one thing that Public Works doesn't have to do, um. And we can get to them a little faster, that way we can kind of focus on getting the stations plowed out. Doug and Jake were doing that, a lot of treating and course going on, responding to car wrecks and, and different calls, so. They were pretty much straight through during the day, you know, Saturday through, through Wednesday and uh. I was out over the weekend on some calls, but when I was in the office. Um trying to keep track of stuff, Mondays through Wednesdays, so. We were all pretty busy and, and. There during the, the. Really bad, you know, blizzard time, you know, when they pulled all the snow plows off the roads. You know, you just couldn't see where you're going, and everybody's gonna end up in the ditch, you know. We pull dispatch, you know, if you get a call for us, call us first before you tone it out, because. Depending on what it is, you know, we may not put a truck out. It's almost suicide, but, but not truck out the road, whether. Well, we, we end up in the ditch or whether we hit somebody else, because we can't see him.
All these guys getting to the station.
Exactly, exactly. And so luckily, we didn't have to make a decision to not go on one, because luckily, apparently, everybody stayed home very nervous times. And, and we didn't get any call, but that would have been a very tough decision to make. Um either way, depending on what the call was, whether we said no, we can't go for right now. But luckily, we didn't have to make that decision. Any questions for me?
Next mission, time for Mr. Parker, ten forty. Monty Whittle was one of our pre seven thirty customers this morning, and sitting out in the lobby, and talking, he says. You're the only one I recognize around here. As he's watching people walk in. He was looking good.
You know, he was still around.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I can know.
He'll stay in town for sure. He's been working on a remodel project for his elderly mother and. Well, he kept telling, he told me a while back, I saw him, because he borrowed some tools from me. He said, I keep telling she, because she makes dinners and desserts, he says, Mom, you gotta quit making desserts. He said, I keep telling she, cause she makes dinners and desserts, he says, Mom, you gotta quit making desserts, because he was packing it on. I asked him, he said, she's still making them.
You just gotta make a conscious choice to quit eating. That's all you can do there.
Good morning, commissioners, uh Brian Parker, county counselor. Uh, I I don't have uh any specific items to bring up during the administrative work session. Uh, other than to just briefly review, again, this is the Pendine County Projects uh list. That I put together to show a lot of this stuff is. Stuff that I'm working on and then I also try to pick up uh some of the larger stuff that uh Jacob. Hanson, our deputy is working on great as well, just so that we have um. Uh, just so that everybody knows some of the activities that we're involved with again. Um, and I will go through this each each report, just because it starts to get repetitive. But we have our own tasks um that we do just on a regular basis. And then we have the uh current projects uh list, and this is the, this is the large stuff. Right, there's always smaller things that we're addressing, we try to catch those just clouds through as rapidly as possible. Um, each of these bullet points has um several things underneath it. Right, and they would vary from, oh, we attended a meeting to generally separate meetings. Um, to we're producing a document, we're reviewing contracts, all of the above. We're court, we're coordinating with all the players that are involved and so. To put together a list that referenced all of the activities under each one, at some point you you start to say, okay, well, that gets to be pretty overwhelming. Um, and so what we try to do is to reference, okay, these are the things that we're dealing with right now. Um, and it continues to grow as uh as I'm able to add more and more. I think one of the things that I wanted to point out that we're dealing with. Uh, that's upcoming is we have oral arguments in both the. Um, uh B O C C versus Kansas Historical Society base as well as. Uh, planning and zoning matter, uh Prairie Wood Holdings uh that both of those have been scheduled for court appeals. Uh, to your oral arguments in coming up, uh Jacob, we split duties. In that Jacob is handling the oral arguments for the Prairie Wood and I'm handling oral argument for um. The uh Historical Society Matter, and so we'll be, those take quite a bit of preparation, as you could imagine, because. Basically, what it is is just like we do here for fifteen minutes, um we stand up in front of court and we provide a brief review. And uh our explanation where the case is and then they're free to ask us any question that they could possibly come up with. About even the most obscure point of of what's being talked about, and so we deal with that. Um, and then we have various and sundry other things that we're dealing with, so with that, um I'll just, I'll stand for any questions. And uh be happy to you provide more detail on it if there's.
I have a couple things, one, so you had the firing range on there, I know you said you had a meeting. Two weeks ago with somebody trying to, where where are we on that?
Sure, I know, that's a, that's a great question, uh days have been set. Uh, not not set, they've been sent to Mister Mister Knop and his client. And we still have not heard back, I mean, with the snowstorm and everything, but uh I'll be following up today on that, uh now that people are available.
This, that's just a meet out there to go over what's gonna be done, is that the idea?
Yes, and and where that project stands overall, uh just to remind commissioners. Is I I think it's been, I think it's been brief before, but if not, then I apologize, basically, we have an agreement. Um, we have a draft agreement that we're um uh that's more or less. Uh negotiated that specifies uh what a consultant, um it's based off of what the consultant's stand tech has identified needs to be done. Right, and so that's just waiting to be um put into place once we uh gain. Uh, uh, once we establish uh the the procedures for access with property owner. And so that's what we're waiting to do at uh at at this point, and then once that happens, then we'll be coming back before the commission with. Uh, that agreement with bench for for signature, but we want to get an access agreement in place with. The property owner, so that all parties are comfortable and that's where that one stands.
Animal shelter, one was, we had supposedly a trial with them, that they're supposed to come back to us, do you remember when that is?
You know, I, my memory is that, and I, uh this is totally off the top of my head, right? They're supposed to be providing us with numbers and my uh and to the extent that this. Uh, I'm, I cannot remember if which department took responsibility for that or following up with them or bird dogging. Uh, but I haven't seen the numbers come in, if it was. Our, if it was my responsibility to do it, then I'd take ownership of that, but one way or another, um I'll reach out to them and ask. Say, how many dogs, cats, other creatures have you guys taken on our account?
I was thinking February, it was coming, wouldn't do now, but I thought it's February or March, they were supposed to have some numbers and. We review our con, because our contract was just through that period of time with them, and then. After we got some numbers extended, but that just, I don't know, remind them of that, I guess. Whatever that date is and remind them.
Thank you for, thank you for remembering that, Commissioner, we'll be sure to do that.
One more.
I love.
These things came up uh with Leonardville recently, animal control, you're trying to deal with. Oh, not Mark Scott, I guess on that.
There's, yes, uh the brothers, uh the brothers French. Yeah, um I uh love both of them dead. I received some information that there may be a transition in which department is administering that. And so um and so what what we're, it's not that, it's not a very, very, very high priority for us. Um, and I, and in the preliminary discussions I had with Scott, he's. Said, yeah, we want to make sure that this works and that we're doing everything for the citizens, but I think what the can. What the thought is now is if it does transfer to a different entity. Um, then and I.
Then you're starting over again.
Then you're starting over again, and so if it um. Uh, and commissioners can provide additional uh, John, I think that. I think that those discussions are still evolving about where it might finally be housed. Uh, so we'll, we'll be coming back to the commission um with an update and I will. Um, if it transitions, regardless of whether it stays with Manhattan Fire or if it does end up transitioning. Uh, at the point that that decision is made, then we'll try to, I know there'll be some drinking from a fire hose. Or whoever takes that up and I apologize for my poor pun, but um. Uh, we'll try to make, we'll try to get this established at just as quickly as possible, because we do have a framework that I think makes sense. And whoever inherits it will probably um just want to go with that.
Okay, it's priorities for us, but you know, and not not against Scott, the city in general, I don't think is. Not a priority for them.
They.
No, go ahead.
Oh, no, yeah, there there, I think that, I think that to um, I think that to, the one thing I would say is to Scott's. To Scott's credit, right, um, I'm certain that there were probably internal discussions about whether it was going to remain housed there. Um, for the, but he even followed independently, he followed up with me, right, as and so. There's, there is, as we, as we run along a path, right, you know, we're oil, we're all oil foot soldiers. Um, and so I think that, I think that that may be some of what some of the delay has has been as well, so. Rich, do you, I'm sorry.
On the Prairie Paws and Animal Control, it was previous Deputy County Counselor Craig Cox that was spearheading that on our end, so. That's who was working on it previously, so I don't know where the transition went.
Yeah, we're in uh Craig left, Craig left everything in such a, Craig, Craig did a really nice job. Of leaving things in order, right, and so the big thing, first of all, was to get the agreement with Prairie Paws and then we'll get some numbers. And that will, those numbers will also inform how we structure the agreement with. I don't think they'll change the concept that we're, concept that we're talking about, and there's, there's no big secret, basically, right? If there's a difference between driving five miles into the country versus twenty, right? And so there may be a little bit more of additional reimbursement for time, right, if you're, if you're having to. If whoever's administering that department is having to go all the way up, you know, for pretty far up into the county to do that, and we just. You know, we just do it based off of ratings, right, seems to, seems to make sense, I think it's gonna work, and really, we're just excited now to. Know where it's going to be housed and then we can. If I, if uh if I'm fortunate to be the one that drafts it, I like to keep it short and sweet, and so hopefully it's gonna be just a handful of pages. That says what we do.
Because the animal shelter agreement, we included the small cities in that, wasn't it? Is animal control would be the same way. See how it works, see what the city wants. That's, let's see, there's been a problem looking on their bills and dogs running.
Yeah, I. I think it's, I think that works, I think we also need to make sure that uh with the smaller cities. Uh, that they have laws on books that can be enforced, right, and so there's and then.
Yeah, we have some coordination to make sure they want it to.
Me, yeah, and so that's the, that's the, that's the only thing that we want to make sure of is that we have. We have good resolutions that can be enforced and ordinances, but that's something that can be addressed and our office is happy to help. Thank you, anything else?
I like your format.
Thank you.
I I do, I think that's a lot more condensed than it used to be. I I like that.
Well, the thing that, the thing that we're always trying to balance, right, is there's. Coming from private practice, I got in the habit of billing, right? And the problem that you get into with billing is if you treat it as a billing task, then there is. Every single thing that we touch has an input, right? And then trying to put that all into a report, that can get pretty boring. Yeah, and I don't know that it provides either the commission or the public with much useful information, I'm not sure anybody cares who I called it. December thirteenth to get something, you know, moving, it's more important that we got. So that's, that's where I think we're trying to balance, you know, so, thank you all.
Mr. Just Catherine Hensler was up to eleven.
Heating place or whatever, you know.
Is there a next one?
Yeah. About forty percent chance so far.
I'm afraid of my free time, I'm absolutely. So I was looking up, I had always heard about. And I said. I don't know what this is, right? If you get down to really my new statistics. And I mean, I, I'm bungling this, I see, you know, this. Apparently, if you get down. And then that was kind of the manifestation, you know, then the butterfly effect and everything came about, like, which I never read. So this, and I'm not well read enough, but it's.
Funny, I mean, even up until maybe a couple of years ago, it was very regular to think, no. Meteorology is one of the few careers you can be wrong almost a hundred percent of the time and not getting fired.
Yeah.
Where now, it's really been consistently accurate, which is scary, especially if we're getting this prediction in a couple of weeks, well.
Yeah.
Within a week or so, and it's not looking like in our favor, unless you want to scheme.
Oh, yeah.
But we'll scheme the plant kills, it's not the way.
Not shovel, but shovel down. They had a path down through the snowpack.
I bet they did, yeah, I wonder if anybody was over at the.
Take a, take a lot of packing and get it down pretty.
It was probably for snow skates. You said, steam up spring. I haven't skewed. What I worked for. Cyrus, I think, in Chicago, and watching the home improvement department, and then Cyrus took all of my. One of the ski resorts.
Oh, really?
Yeah, so they gave us this candid pass. With all the employees, and and days off, which usually weren't on the weekends, so then we got to work in store. We 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 get a group of people, we go up every week.
That's then with you, I guess it's spelled, it's placed at North in City.
Yeah, I guess it makes stuff.
Yeah, where they make it. Yeah, what it's called.
Yeah, I haven't heard about it then.
Heard anything about it, but part of the way, you know, I loved what you heard about it, because it was, they advertised there.
Yeah, it probably isn't very advanced. Yeah, really, it sounds nice, nice, yeah. But you know, having twenty inches of snow, it's something.
Uh, good morning, everyone.
I think we'll be a little bit brief this morning because really the beginning is we are closed to the public. And we have things shifted around. They've got artifacts that have gone back into storage. We have others that are waiting for storage. And we're breaking down all of the old nineteen seventy seven modular walls and platforms. So today we are actually going to begin painting. So I do want to extend the invitation to all of the commissioners. I will send an email out. Um, if you are curious and you wanna come see how the progress is going, you're most welcome to come into the museum. We are still there um running regular administrative activities and um. We do have the Good Know House still open with our regular hours. So uh at any point, we're normally open here, hoping to see how things look. Uh it looks completely different. And we are really, really happy about that. Um, so we will just jump right into statistics then. Uh visitation and tours for the month of December were a little bit low. Uh considering or compared to other months uh in advance or previous to that. Um however, those numbers are not applicable for a regular December. So um we are of course closed uh with the Pioneer Lock Cabin, but also we limited our programs and outreach. Uh as well as um visitation was just slowed due to holidays, so. Those things. So while the numbers are lower than normal, they are not a concern to us. They do kind of follow trend. Same thing with volunteer hours um due to our limited hours in the month of December, holidays, travel, et cetera. Um our numbers of volunteer hours were a little bit low in the exception of community service. Everybody needed to get their hours, so they did cram them in in December. Um however, we're very grateful for them because they really do help us a lot with building and grounds and picking up. Things around the site, making us look um clean and tidy. I won't go through the education and outreach. Uh however, I did mention that we did a little bit less than we normally do. But we just did still provide a couple of presentations and attended meetings. Uh and provided a couple uh additional tours. Um, I do want to just remind everybody that we did close to the public after December twenty third. We will reopen on February eighth to the public, um and that is for our gallery redo and renovation. Um, I do apologize. I could not provide you with collection numbers for December. Our curator collections was out um. For an extended vacation, so she is back now. She'll get those numbers to us. And I'll be able to point them at the next staff update. As far as archives and library, we do still have that team of four individuals in place that are taking on those uh research tasks for us. December in trend was a little bit lower than the other months. Uh we handled five, excuse me, five research requests. Um, one of the great things, and I really wanna give this team kudos, is they're turning research requests around within twenty four to forty hours, which is incredibly fast for us. So they're doing a wonderful job on assigning the tasks. They're coming in immediately and helping them. So um they're doing a great job and they're doing so well that um we are probably gonna be um. Rather than them being temporary, we're gonna uh turn them into a permanent team. So that way the new archive, or excuse me, the new period of archives and library does not have to worry about the day to day research tasks coming. As far as building and grounds, um I did just mention that we close to the public on December twenty third. We will reopen on February twenty eighth. Uh we are currently um installing all new exhibits and we are managing space renovations. So we will have a special numbers opening that's gonna take place on Friday, February seventh. Now, um I do mention further on in my report, uh the timeframe of that reception. It was reported in this five to seven. Um, the society just last week decided they would like to extend it from four to seven. So um I will make sure that information going out from here on out is accurate, but uh they will be adding an hour to that. Part of the reason for that is we wanna make sure everybody has a chance to attend. However, there is also um uh uh chair of congress event going on that in five to seven. So we wanna make sure that whoever's attending that also has a chance to attend this reception by creating some additional um hours to attend. Um, we will be opening uh the galleries to the public on Saturday, February eighth. As always, we'll be free and open to the public. We are still continuing with our Good Know House tours, research and administrative services. Uh and we are open, I should say, we are there during our regular business hours. Doors are unlocked. So if anyone needs to come visit, if they need to stop by, if they have questions, they can still reach us just like they could while we were. Excuse me. Economy Electric has conducted a walkthrough with our staff and the public work staff to evaluate the lighting situation in the exhibit galleries. Permanent and temporary storage and the library. At this time, we are waiting on an estimate from them. They're also trying to determine whether or not the uh tracks are still usable. They believe we can purchase updated, upgraded fixtures for those tracks. So right now we are just waiting on that. Um, I will be reaching out to them this week to see where we are because we are now within a month of reopening and we have got to move. Um, I can't remember if I mentioned this ahead, that uh we will be starting painting the galleries today. The Good Know House had a new smart thermostat installed in December, and that was at the expense of the Historical Society Thermal Comfort Image Association account for us. Um, and then the Good No Barn project is underway and entails the restoration of the windows and doors. So you might see some changes over there. We are matching colors, but right now it's very different because um primary has been applied. So um that project is being funded by the Kansas Historical Society, the Riley County Historical Society, and the Caroline Foundation. No county funds are being used for that project. Um, we have had a lot of excitement later lately, and one of those things is we uh do now have a new curator of Archives and Library. She was set to start on January sixth, but we had a snowstorm. And then she was set to come in on the seventh, but we had a snow day. And uh so her first official day was last Wednesday and um. We are very happy to have her on the team. Um, right now she's just getting acclimated and kind of finding her footing. Um, but she's kind of jumped in with two feet and we're very happy with that because that's what that person's gonna have to do. Um, so just a quick reminder, uh she is a Florida native. Again, unfortunately for him, for her. She drove from tropical Florida and uh a snowstorm was waiting for her here. She's doing great though, and kudos to her. She's still smiling. Um, but she has a BA in history and an MA in museum and artifact studies. She asserts in new curatorial roles. Uh since two thousand and eighteen with new museums on the east coast, and she's also worked for a museum in the United Kingdom. Um, we uh will be bringing her probably to the February staff update. So you can meet her, but uh we're very happy to have her on the team and do a welcome, Carly. Um, her name is Carly Behrens. And then through the month of December, uh I interviewed a number of internship candidates for the upcoming spring twenty twenty five semester. There were six applicants. Um, currently, we can only offer two opportunities. So uh this is a good problem to have. Unfortunately, they have to turn a couple of students away. Um, however, we did offer the internships to two K State students, one is Leander Knoen. Um, he is an anthropology and German language student, and then the other is Janet Catalog Evans. Uh she's an anthropologist. They will begin their role within the next two weeks, and that Leander is gonna be starting on Wednesday. Concerning the Riley County Historical Society, they did approve their twenty twenty five budget uh at their December board meeting. And their balance budget for twenty twenty five is set at two hundred and ninety four thousand, uh just a little over that. This is an eighty four percent increase on their twenty twenty four budget, and this is due to the initiatives. That they're moving forward, going to hiring your own administrative manager, sort of properties manager. Um, and facilitating some forthcoming fundraising and development opportunities this year. This has been a huge step for them, for us, for our staff. You know, it's probably gonna get harder before it gets easier because we are going to have to train this person. We're gonna have to be able to seamlessly hand over some of these responsibilities, but it is a step in the right direction. That way our staff can focus on museum issues and county museum responsibilities versus the private nonprofit organization. So again, we are very pleased with that. Um, we're very, really just wanna say a huge thank you to the society for working with us on this. Um, and I'll just report things as they come through, but um we have a big year ahead of us. So real quickly then, just to close with upcoming events, uh like I mentioned, we have a lot of things taking place um. February seventh through the ninth, to include our members' uh exclusive gallery opening, as well as a public opening of new exhibits. Um, all of these things will be free and open to the public, and they'll follow um standard operation and operational hours with the exception of the gallery opening, which. Again, here it says five to seven. It will be from four P M to seven P M on the seventh. Uh, we will also be um providing a program through U F M on February fourth titled Celebrating Black History Month, the Exodus Movement in Riley County. Uh normally, our programs are free and open to the public, but because this is a U F M program, they do charge a uh. A fee for attendance, and you do have to pre-register for that. Uh, we do have this listed on our website in case anyone is interested. We'll also be having, we'll be resuming our fireside chats for the twenty twenty five season. Those will take place on the second Tuesday of every month. Uh in February, that will be the eleventh, and it'll be in the same place, same time as it was in previous seasons, like Cook Coffee, which is downtown of points. Five thirty to seven P M. We'd of course put five thirty because that's when you encourage people to get their their seats. The program starts at six P M sharp, and these are always free and open to the public. And then something that we just added to our calendar on February twenty sixth, we'll be having um. The Historic Preservation Summit, which will be the the main topic will be preserving historic cemeteries. This is something that we have partnered with um for quite a few years. It's usually on an every other year basis with the um Manhattan Riley County Preservation Alliance. And the City of Manhattan's Historic Resources Board. We did not get one scheduled in twenty twenty four, so it's just being moved into the early part of this year. Um, this will be free and open to the public, and it'll be held at Union Hall at three twenty eight points uh from six to eight P M. And um as always, like I mentioned, free and open to the public. Uh, that concludes my report. Do you have any questions? Okay, well, thank you very much, and um certainly let me know if y'all wanna come and visit, be behind the scenes of taking down the old and installing. Yes.
Didn't know if you had anything planned to maybe once it's complete to schedule the commissioners up there. I know in the past, they had annual luncheons like at the Wolf House and every once in a while at your main facility. It might be an option.
Sure, I am. I'm absolutely open to that. That might think that would be a um nice way for you guys to see the new. Um, I'll send you an email and maybe we can talk about availability times.
Uh just schedule it with send me, and she can check on the dates with commissioners. And just schedule at the end of a meeting for lunch or something if they want.
Okay. That would be great. Thank you.
Next question of Jan Schumann at eleven fifty. Jan, how you doing?
How are you?
Good. How were your drives?
I got chuffed over last week.
It's a hard move.
Yeah, I moved it. Um, we recessed as the Board of County Commission and convene as the Board of County Health.
I would second that.
And moved the second into uh recess that the Board of County Commissioners would convene as the Board of Health. All favor.
Bye.
Bye. Yeah.
Nice to see you.
Too.
Glad you could all make it through that. See. Um, I'm just, I'm here to um request permission to apply to apply for the um early childhood block grant for just something getting made to six. Um, I'll just give you a a little bit of background about Raising Riley. Um, we originally did nineteen ninety nine um. As a vision of two community leaders to serve the early childhood population and families through experiences. And quality childcare that would provide early learning and success for children entering school. At that time, the program provided childcare training, incentives and a quality improvement system. Um, child program assessments and child. Her scholarships for families up to eighty five percent of poverty. Um, these are things that we still uh continue to strive for and provide. Um, one of the most important components of the program is the provision of childcare scholarships for families that meet specific risk factors established by the early childhood block grant. Um, scholarships help families provide their children with the opportunity to attend quality early learning environments with approved licensed providers. While remaining in the workforce or completing their education. Raising Riley also provides family engagement and parent intercation opportunities for raising our other families. Riley County families, sorry. Um, through collaboration with USD three eighty three, um Raising Riley has provided nine years of camp kindergarten. Uh, this program provides quality transitional experiences for children without prior preschool experience or formal childcare. Um, who are entering kindergarten in the fall. Uh, the emphasis is placed upon familiarizing um children with the basic expectations of kindergarten. The programs received endorsements from school administrators, teachers and parents in the community. Um, we continue the early literacy program um to provide activities and learning through books. This program teaches and models the importance of early literacy introduction to both providers and parents. Um, we have professional development that's provided for childcare providers and colleagues in the early learning community as well. Additionally, Raising Riley collaborates with other Raising Riley County programs. Family childcare providers and centers, social services and community organizations. Kansas State University Colleges of Education um and the College of Health and Human Services, and I don't think it's called that. USD three eighty three Manhattan Ogden, USD three seventy eight Riley County, and USD three eighty four Blue Valley Randall. We also collaborate with D C F, Infant Topper Services and the Childcare aware Kansas. Um, our goals for fiscal year twenty twenty six included a full implement, full implementation. Um, of our parent advisory committee that we've um began up organizing in twenty twenty five. Um, advocacy, collaboration, public partnerships, online programs, and needs assessments and sustainability. Um, the Children's Cabinet and Trust Fund administers the Early Childhood Block Grant. The staff of the Raising Riley Program has reviewed the fiscal year twenty six program and budget information. And we're requesting nine hundred and eleven thousand, seven hundred and fifty seven dollars for the fiscal year twenty six proposal through the Early Childhood Block Grant. The fiscal um year for the Early Childhood Block Grant is July first through June thirtieth. The E C B G has stated that level funding is available for fiscal year thirty twenty six, allowing our request for funding to remain at the nine hundred and eleven thousand, seven hundred and fifty seven dollars. Um, the E C B ship sets an expectation for contribution of financial resources from the community. Riley County's been the source of that funding um for years since, at least since um. Since I've worked there and since we've become part of Riley County. Due to the significant wage increases for all staff over the past three years. Um, increases in the need for scholarship assistance for families and the E C B G, E C B G funding remaining level. We are requesting additional support from Riley County this year. Um, to maintain our services to the community at the current level, we are requesting a hundred and eighty five thousand in max. To maintain our services to the community at the current level, we are requesting a hundred and eighty five thousand in match. The E C T V funds support personnel costs, us services for camp kindergarten, parent education programs, and a large portion of funding for the scholarship program. Match funds from Riley County will support a portion of those scholarships, provide a professional development and program support. Camp kindergarten staffing and supplies and other program expenses. Riley County will receive thirty five thousand dollars for indirect costs. Why, you're asking permission to proceed with the grant request and. Ask for a little money.
That budget carry for us being in your.
Yeah.
Split in half, basically.
Yeah, so that's what I was going to bring up. It's going to be over to budget carry twenty five, twenty six for us.
And it says requesting a hundred and eighty five of that in the budget already.
Yeah.
That's already in the budget.
Yeah, not obviously portion of twenty six.
Right, yeah, I mean, half of it was, well, probably part, the first half was from the year before.
Yeah, it gets.
It's juggling, yes.
But it wasn't included, the number that you. And I, I would just, just for reference, we used an estimated two point five percent colon to get the number. Not, not holding anybody to that, but we looked at C D I U and all of our policy. So Jan has pretty good numbers, at least projected numbers for twenty six.
Motion.
Yeah. It's always confusing. I would make a motion to approve the funding for. The E C B G grant application.
Does that one work?
I think you're just, you're just, you're just letting her go ahead and skip there.
Oh, okay.
Asking for it, and that match is included, that's actually.
It's in there, well.
So it's not necessarily the funding, but allowing her to apply for the E C.
That, that match, or probably.
Well, yeah, looking at the dollars on fiscal.
Right.
Um. Okay, then I'll change that. The motion to.
The, the motion written in the car is to approve the R C H D submit the grant application to the Kansas Children's Cabinet and Trust Fund as presented.
All right, it didn't have a fiscal payment. Okay, I make a motion that R C H D request that we approve the grant, submission of the grant application to the Kansas Children's Cabinet and Trust Fund as presented.
I'll second. Moving seconded to approve, submit a grant application to Kansas Children Cabinet and Trust Fund as presented, all favor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jan. Appreciate it.
We have a motion, Commissioner. Yeah, we're going to make a motion that we recess as the Board of County Health and reconvene as the Board of County Commission.
I'll second that.
And moving second to recess, if the Board of Health, we convene as the Board of County Commission, all in favor.
Aye.
Maybe after missing two meetings, I would, but I don't, so. Go ahead and make a motion then to adjourn the January thirteenth, two thousand twenty five meeting of the Riley County Commission.
I'll second that.
Moving second to adjourn the January thirteenth meeting with Board of County Commissioners, all in favor. And the next meeting.